Hello, everyone. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2017, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 4th, 2017, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. When you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones. An assistive listening devices are available. Mr. Buckman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) (laughing) 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 (inaudible) Roll call, please.
Mayor Burt Midler?
Here.
Councilwoman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilwoman George?
Here.
Councilwoman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held February 21st, 2017, March 7th, 2017, March 21st, 2017, and April 4th, 2017, as distributed?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Sure.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Abstain.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Borough Attorney, do I skip the Borough Administrator's report?
Uh, sure.
Okay. All right, we're going to start with the council report, and tonight I'm going to start on my right with Councilwoman Kim.
Thank you, Mayor. In regards to senior services, I attended April's luncheon on the 6th, and thank you also for providing the food at last month's luncheon. Starting Thursday, May 4th, the Senior Youth Center will be now offering kosher meals on Thursdays in addition to the Tuesday luncheon program that we started earlier this year. Members of the senior center in our community have been enjoying a hot kosher meal each Tuesday. If anyone is interested, please join us each Tuesday and Thursday at the Highland Park Senior Youth Center. The meal includes an entree salad, dessert for a $5 per meal contribution. Lunch is served at 11:45 a.m. or can be arranged for takeout. We have partnered with Jewish Family Services to provide this service. Please contact us or stop by the center to sign up and obtain a monthly menu. Our next senior luncheon in celebration of Mother's Day will be held on Tuesday, May 9th at 12 noon. Seniors will enjoy musical entertainment, and lunch will be catered by Highland Park's own Pathari. At 1:30 p.m., there will be a special Mother's Day planting program. On Wednesday, May 10th, some of our seniors will be attending Middlesex County's 90th Birthday Bash. This event is in celebration and honor of seniors 90 years of age and over. This year, we have 10 of our own Highland Park seniors that will be in attendance of this very special event. In regards to rec committee, we will be meeting Monday, this coming Monday, May 8th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Senior Youth Center. Registration for summer camp, day camp, and sports camp, theater camp, special needs camp, team camp. Our three-day mini camp begins July 5th and will feature cooking, arts, crafts, sports, and fun. The Highland Park Youth Theater Company, sorry, performance of Highland Park's High School Musical Junior will be held on Thursday, May 11th at 6:30, and Sunday, May 14th at 3:00 p.m. at the high school auditorium. Youth and adult tennis registration is open for summer tennis, which begins June 11th, sorry. The Arts Commission met on April 13th. They are still looking for more members, so any artists out there, please come to the next meeting, which you can find on the Borough website. On Sunday, April 30th, we had the opening of the Sculpture Walk. Nearly 100 people came through to see the sculptures. The Highland Park High School Band performed. We would like the map of the sculptures to be placed in the kiosk at the Environmental Center so people can have the information. The sharing for the autobiography solo show workshop went very well, and it was an excellent first attempt at holding a workshop of this kind. The sharing happened on April 18th from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Open studios continue to grant applicants. We are having our 11th Annual Open Studio Tour. So far, we have about 10 people signed up, and we're getting the word out so that more people can continue to sign up. And we are planning a second book arts workshop for the fall since the first one in February was so popular. And that is it for my report, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Kim. Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up for one moment on Councilwoman Kim's report on the Sculpture Walk. I'd just like to thank some of our volunteers and employees who assisted in that. Alan Williams and John Marin. Alan from Environmental and John from the Arts Commission were onsite because one of the requirements was that we have representatives of the sponsors and the borough onsite, and they were there all day and helped out quite a bit. Within administration, the Mayor and Ms. Schmier for their help with pulling the agreements together with Rutgers and Joan Hollings and Jen Santiago getting the insurance certificates. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Pannicello and Officers O'Mara and Fitzgerald for traffic control, steering a big truck with a crane, a bunch of crazy sculptures in traffic at the same time that there were road limitations from PSE&amp;G during the morning and afternoon rush hour. We really owe them a lot of thanks for their dedication and helping the traffic move along. With regard to DPW, I hope everyone's noticed that they've completed another round of pottle repairs, especially in some of the intersections on the north side and the municipal parking lot adjacent to the Reformed Church, and the patching will continue through the spring season. Everyone who was at Earth Day on the 23rd, I hope saw that the Recycling Coach app was rolled out and demonstrated by Frank Troy from DPW. As Councilwoman Wolkowitz has been presenting during the design of this project, it not only reminds you of what the recycling days are, but you can actually look up if you have something that didn't get recycled on a regular day. Does it go to the dump? Does it go into the environment? Over 600 described articles and tells you how to recycle them. Also, it's a reporting system to report issues or problems directly to the borough on the app. It's very helpful and very useful. And we've gotten a lot of questions and comments about some of the road repairs along River Road. As I've indicated to those residents, we hopefully will be getting more cooperation and further feedback as the projects wrap up about repaving those, but they're not borough responsibility. And finally, also, I've discussed with a number of people and walked all of the trails in the Lower Meadow with regard to repair of some of the fence posts, and that hopefully will be moving very shortly. I had an opportunity to attend the Sustainable Highland Park meeting on April 19th. They're submitting a grant application to NJDEP, which I believe we have on, for approval tonight for a Level 2 electric vehicle charging station through DEP's Drive Green Initiative. Also, there is a similar program through PSE&amp;G so that we can hopefully get some Level 2 charging stations in town and encourage green driving, or preferably no driving. Earth Day on the 23rd was a big success. It seemed to me that the crowd was a little bigger this year. Also, STACK and the Native Plant Reserve were handing out free persimmon trees for anybody who's not from the South, like some members in my family are from the South, and persimmons that grow on the trees there, they're big grown. These are sour persimmons, but they're good for jam. They also plant very well in moderate shade, and most of us still have a lot of mature trees, so they're actually very well chosen for placement. DPW is handing out those big containers. I know that Mr. Troy said use them in a good recyclable way, but they're for collection of biofuel base, so, you know, if you do in fact have a volume of that, they collect it and drop it off. The Solar Challenge from Sustainable Highland Park wraps up this month. We probably won't beat Montclair or some of the other towns that were really doing quite well, but we still have quite an enrollment, and there's still time to get your free estimate for solar through the chosen contractor. At the recent Environmental Commission meeting, a number of pending matters were discussed. First, repairs to the facility itself and cleanup after the winter is a little bit harsh on parts of the building, and in coordination with DPW, some of the essential repairs were completed in just a few days to ready it for Earth Day. And also, the regular meetings, which more and more have been held at the Environmental Center. They went over details for the sculpture exhibit, which, as we know, is a great success. Members of the Commission, along with members of STACK and volunteers in the Native Plant Reserve, were also present with PSE&amp;G on the morning of the 27th to do a walk-around inspection of the Lower Meadow site for the proposed solar farm, and apparently, things worked out very, very well, and they've made quite a number of steps to move that forward. And at this time, just to indicate, last Friday, I attended an all-day seminar at the Law Center in New Brunswick. It was put on by BPU in coordination with the utility companies, council who represent all of the big utilities, and the regulators from BPU and DEP with regard to new developments in energy regulation. Part of that was in relation to development of microgrids and some of the problems and solutions that have been developed at both the state and the federal level. I had an opportunity to sit next to and share lunch with a gentleman who was in charge of the Washington, D.C. development of the microgrids block by block for federal buildings, and we had a lot to share, and we have a teleconference coming up at the end of the week to discuss our mutual projects. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman George, his activities actually took up a lot of our time over the last few weeks, the Earth Day Festival, and particularly the Art Walk where, if anyone was out there, it was, it's pretty cool out there, so definitely check that out. Just a few items. The Immigration and Refugee Task Force met on April 5th to discuss the final draft of the Inclusive Communities Resolution that we'll be considering tonight. This was prior to publishing on the Borough website. Once again, many thanks to residents Isabel Ruano, Tracy Cangiano, Latitia Cattaldi, John Adler for their valuable insight and expertise on these issues, and I would also like to welcome Jordan Steiner to the task force, and she's being appointed tonight. I think everybody's here, and also, hello, everybody. It's really nice to see a crowded room. First on the task force's agenda is exploring something that is outlined in this Inclusive Communities Resolution, and that's the establishment of an independent privately-funded social services nonprofit. This will be a lot of work, but we're looking to partner with existing organizations in order to achieve this goal, so more on that. The Commission for Universal Access met on April 6th, where the discussion focused on concepts for the borough's inclusive playground, and a wonderful new concept driven by resident Monique Coleman for a youth theater stars and friends camp. The next meeting of the Commission for Universal Access will take place this Thursday, May 4th, at 7:30, right here in the Berman Conference Room here at Borough Hall. On Thursday, April 13th, the Highland Park Housing Authority held its regular meeting. In addition to conducting regular business, Board members Evelyn Sadehi, hi Evelyn, and Raisa Martinez presented to me excellent candidates for the Commission's first resident commissioner in quite some time. And on the agenda, we're pleased to welcome Regis Methman to the board. His participation in our public meetings and knowledge of the issues facing the Housing Authority will be real assets moving forward. Also, the Commission discussed home funding for the Highland Park Housing Authority's Park Terrorists Apartments, which are the 24 family units that are right behind us on South 6th and an integral part of our public housing inventory. Unfortunately, following our meeting, our home application for $200,000 was denied by the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders. They had some excellent, we had some excellent competition. But these funds are necessary to make immediate improvements to bathrooms in our 24 family units. As one of the first public housing authorities in the state to enter into HUD's Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, and basically what that is, is where we partner with an investor to make necessary capital improvements because we can't carry the debt to make, the public housing authority can't carry the debt to make these capital improvements. We need to be aggressive in looking at alternate forms of capital in order to make these improvements. Public housing is a cornerstone of community inclusivity, and making sure our local public housing stock is safe and decent must be a priority for the county. So, and on that, we, Housing Authority Executive Director Donna Brightman and I had a very productive discussion with Jerry McKenzie, the county's Director of Department of Community Services, and Melissa Lewis, the Director of the county's Office of Human Services, to discuss how to approach these needs moving forward. We intend to aggressively pursue alternate funding, as well as being out in front of these federal grant opportunities. The next Highland Park Housing Authority meeting will take place Wednesday, May 10th, 6:30 p.m. at the Cronman Building, right here on South 6th Avenue. Later that evening, on April 13th, the Highland Park Board of Health met, where there was a substantial discussion about the FDA's enforcement of tobacco and electronic cigarette laws in the region. Specifically, we discussed four violations that FDA agents observed in Highland Park in the fall of 2016, which resulted in warning letters to retail establishments found in violation of federal tobacco laws and regulations by selling cigarettes or e-cigarettes to minors. Since we currently don't coordinate with the FDA or our deputized agents thereof, moving forward, the Board of Health is going to try to look for ways to coordinate with the FDA in order to enforce our local laws. The next Board of Health meeting will be held May 11th, 7:00 p.m. in the lower-level conference room here at Borough Hall. We're considering a few important items tonight, but I would also like to welcome our new BA Business Administrator, Terry Hovere. We really look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things to report on. This past weekend, we had Operation Take Back, and Operation Take Back is a medicine drop where at the Senior Youth Center, we had the DEA. They have a program where we can drop, we dropped off, residents of Highland Park dropped off 140 pounds of medication that was not being used, which is a wonderful thing, and we encourage people to always return their unused medication back to us because, as we all are aware of the opioid epidemic that we have across our country, it's good not to have those drugs laying around and just drop them off here. And so, Highland Park did very well. We were the largest number, we had the largest number of collection this past weekend, the 29th and the 30th of this month, that at the Senior Center, we had the biggest drop in return of medication. On another note, that Highland Park Police Department was acknowledged by the Attorney General's Office. We were nominated for outstanding community policing, and we'll be receiving an award on May 22nd at 10:30 a.m. at Livingston Campus, Student Campus. So, the Mayor, myself, and Chief Frisco will be going down to accept the award for our community, and we have a lot more work to do, but we're proud that we live in a community that we are being acknowledged for good community policing. With that said, with the warm weather that we have, we are reminding everyone to please wear your bicycle helmet when you're going out riding your bike. Another program that we all should be aware of is a campaign called Look Down, because we tend to be people who are always on our cellphone and always looking at our cellphone, but we come to intersections, please take a moment to be conscious that you're in an intersection and look out for oncoming traffic. Another safety program that we'll be having coming towards the end of May will be every 15 minutes, and it will be at our high school, and it's awareness of drunk driving. So, we'll be having our every 15-minute program at the high school, and it's a whole reenactment of what can happen when people drive who are drunk, and we are encouraging everyone to participate, but especially our young people who are going to be graduating and going off and driving and what have you. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Fine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am glad that the appointment of Mrs. Phyllis Goldstein to the Shared Services Commission is on the council's agenda this evening, and that the 10 positions available on the Shared Services Commission will now all be filled. The Shared Services Commission, which is being chaired by former Mayor Stephen Nolan, will be meeting this Thursday, May 4th, between 4:30 and 5:30 p.m. here at Borough Hall, and I urge all residents to attend meetings of the Shared Services Commission, where recommendations for potential shared services and revenue opportunities for our borough will be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have, oh, sorry, Council President Wolkowitz.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a few things. I always look forward to our 5K and street fair, so join us this Sunday, big day, Sunday, May 7th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the high school. Kids races and the 5K start then, and the registration fees that we raise for this event go to help fund our police and fire departments, our First Date Squad, our Arts and Rec Department, and our library. If you haven't registered yet, please do it in advance. If not, you can still register day of the event. And run it, walk it, skip it, jump it, but please join us. And later that day, 11:30 to 4:30, is our fantastic Spring Street Fair. So, we're really looking forward to that. Also, just what Councilman George was saying about our recycle app, please feel free to multitask right now as you listen to the rest of my report. You can download, pull out your smartphones, download it now. Recycle Coach, thank you. And in March, we approved our area in need of rehabilitation screening committee, and I just want to remind everybody that the purpose of the screening committee is to increase consistency across the entire borough planning process and among the borough's various boards and agencies by working in coordination with the borough planner in establishing a proactive pre-application process for any project which includes any potential rehabilitation, redevelopment, infill development, or other application for development. The screening committee will meet early in the process with any developer wishing to explore a potential project or preparing an application for the development that would normally track directly to the planning or zoning board or redevelopment agency. This will allow the borough to provide early guidance, early recommendations, and input to a developer, which can help limit potential time and significant costs, and result in higher-quality formal applications more consistent with the borough's master plan, redevelopment plans, zoning regulations, main suite program, and other goals. So far, the committee has met twice, and we've seen four developers. I don't really have any specifics right now to share, but we were able to provide a great dialogue with these developers in a transparent forum and provide them with recommendations of what our community will find most acceptable. I'll keep you posted as these potential projects move ahead. And lastly, I'd also like to join the governing body in welcoming our new Borough Administrator, Terry Hovere. I look forward to working with you, especially on issues with economic development. So, thank you.
You're here.
Thank you. Now, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a few things. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Please feel welcome to join us at any of our council meetings. I'm sure there's always going to be something on our agenda that will interest you, because we can't do our jobs without hearing from you, seeing you working with us. It's a very important thing to me and the rest of the governing body to have citizen participation, so thank you for coming out tonight. Speaking of citizen participation, I'd like to invite you all to join me as we celebrate all of our volunteers. We will be having our volunteer presentation evening. We have over 300 citizen volunteers that work with us on different committees and commissions throughout the town, so, and there's always room for more. So, the event will be held on Tuesday evening, May 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Senior Youth Center, which you all know is right down the street from here, on the other side of the building. And this year, we will be honoring our several volunteers from each of our committees and commissions, and our volunteer of the year this year is Ms. Kim Hammond. So, come out, congratulate Kim, hear more about what she's done for Highland Park over the years, and please join me there. Several of our council people mentioned the Sculpture Walk. How many of you have been to the Sculpture Walk so far? Okay. I know you guys. Well...
(inaudible)
I really highly recommend it, and if you have little ones that you can bring with you, please bring them. All of the sculptures are interactive, so you can sit on them, you can ride on them, you can climb on them. I just want to say a big, big thank you to the Arts Commission and to Councilman Phil George, who was the liaison at the time to the Arts Commission. This is something that demonstrates that government can actually get things done. It was less than a year ago that I took a trip to Switzerland and saw sculptings in a park along a river. Actually, it was a lake, it was Lake Zurich. And I came back with pictures of the sculptures and brought them to the Arts Commission, and they said, "Wow, that's a great idea. We can do outdoor art." We then went to the county because we wanted to do it in the park, and we got the county together behind us. One of the Arts Commission members actually works for the Mason Grove School of the Arts, and she said, "I know the sculptors that can make this happen." So, I have to tell you that I came back at the end of September, or middle of September, and with the idea, and just a vision of it here in Highland Park, and all of the people I just mentioned managed to make it happen with not only a municipal government involved, but a county government involved, and that is amazing. So, again, kudos to our Arts Commission, the county freeholders, and Councilman Phil George for pulling this all together. Please go, enjoy the Sculpture Walk. It will be here through the summer, and then we will probably, hopefully, have a new exhibit after the MFA students finish their projects next year as well. So, as you can tell, I'm a little excited about that.
Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you very much. I actually helped dig some of the holes, too.
It was amazing, Phil.
It was a fabulous day. People were already walking by and saying, "This is such a great idea."
Yeah, it was terrific. And also, thank you to the Police Chief Frisco and his team for making sure traffic went all right while these huge cranes were bringing the sculptures to the park. Okay. I did also, just last week, attend the New Jersey Conference of Mayors annual meeting. I really enjoy going to these things. There are over 560 municipalities in the state of New Jersey, and this is an opportunity for me to meet with other mayors and pick their brains. There are mayors that have been mayors for decades, and they know how to work the system. And so, it was a great learning experience for me. We got to share ideas. I actually was able to share some of the things we accomplished here with other mayors. It was really a wonderful experience. It was really a wonderful experience. And the last thing I want to talk about is there is a resolution that we will be voting on tonight, among several, many other resolutions. And I want to give a big thank you to Councilman Matt Hirsch and his Task Force on Immigration and Refugee Status here in Highland Park, along with the outside organizations that you worked with to pull this all together. It's been months in the making. We did our job, and we listened to you, we listened to many different people, we had our open public forum. I want to thank all of you for contributing to the conversation and making us do our job as best as we could. So thank you to everybody. All right, moving along. Enough from the mayor. Is there any public discussion? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. And I'm going to ask everybody to keep your comments down to maybe three to four minutes so that everybody has a chance to speak.
Thank you. David Hughes, 330 South 3rd Avenue. I'm a little puzzled by what's happened to this resolution, both in terms of the title and the substance. I thought we began with the idea of being a sanctuary city, which would have put this community on record as opposing Trump's deportation agenda and would have contributed to a national movement towards asylum or something, some Reagan-era amnesty. But then it became fair and welcome, and now it's something ungrammatical here that makes no sense to me about upholding respect and protection for historically discriminated populations. I don't know what a historically discriminated population is. That sounds to me like Irish and Italian Americans who are no longer discriminated against by and large, but we're talking about people currently discriminated against, and worse, people who may be banished from this country. So I would ask the council to reconsider the title and come up with something decipherable beyond yourselves. Clause 7, which seems to be the heart of it, says that Highland Park will obey all sorts of people, federal laws, state laws, the Attorney General of New Jersey, and the Middlesex County Prosecutor. I don't know what "and" on the second-to-last line of number 7 means. Does that mean that Highland Park won't act unless all four or five of those entities are ordering Highland Park to, or if only one of those entities is ordering Highland Park to? What seems to be the gold standard is disobeying the executive branch, because the executive branch -- I think we've got to recognize the moment we're in in this country, right? The Electoral College, with the collusion of the FBI and Russian hackers, handed the presidency to a very irresponsible person, right? And with Christie as his right-hand man. And so the only sensible thing to do is to disobey, to the legal extent possible, those kinds of authorities. We've seen this with the Muslim ban, right? Trump came up with the Muslim ban. It was so unconstitutional, but it took judges to stop the Muslim ban. We should not obey anything coming from the executive branch with respect to immigrants unless a judge orders us to do that. And that is an entirely legal position that I just articulated, but I don't find it reflected in Clause 7, and Clause 9 makes things even worse. So I wish you guys would take this back to the drawing board, because we've gone from something that was pretty good to something that was half-baked to something that is basically almost nothing.
So I just want to address one thing that you said, David, and then I'll ask Councilman Hirsch if he has anything he wants to add. But the purpose of this document is not to help the 45th president or hurt the 45th president. The purpose of this document is to make life better for all our residents, particularly those that are immigrants and refugees and new residents in this community. Matt, did you want to address anything?
You know, we've had extensive conversations with the county on their detainer policy, which we have to be in line with. And you know that we are working very closely with the county as far as tightening up their detainer policy. This is specifically related to our residents and where our police interact with our residents in regard to violations of local ordinances, and when and what their role is, and how our residents interact with the police, and also what our policy guideline, what our policy goals are moving forward. If you want a political document, you can do exactly what I'm doing, and what I know that you have been doing, is going out and protesting and taking part in these actions. This is a policy document, and we've discussed this. And it frustrates me that we, you know, keep having this back-and-forth conversation, and you think that this is a, you know, lifeless document. I'm sorry that you feel that way, but I guarantee you, in 10 years, in five years, you'll think differently. You will think differently, because I and a lot of people in this room who are sitting right next to you, and whether you participate or not, a lot of people in this room will make sure that this document takes life.
Okay.
Can you just tell me what "and" means in number 7?
Okay, I'm going to go through everybody else, and then if there are additional questions and everybody's had a chance to talk, we can go back to that. Okay, please state your name and address.
My name is Josh Przanski, I live at 141 North 10th Avenue here in Highland Park, and I just want to discuss a different resolution that's probably not as controversial or what have you. It's just a very kind one, and I want to say thank you. Resolution 517167, which is a resolution to approve a road diet for Upper Route 27. Just wanted to say that 16 months ago, there was a very tragic accident that took place on that side of town, where a young boy was standing with his mother, waiting to cross the street, and was hit by a car who careened onto the sidewalks and killed him and injured his mother and others. And from the day after the accident, that night in fact, I called the mayor to discuss how we could change and fix that side of town to make it accessible for the pedestrians who live in the triangle to cross over to the other side of 27. For those who are familiar with that part of 27, you'll notice the sidewalks are very narrow. In fact, right now, on the corner of Barnard and 27, they're scaffolding up to work on a house, which makes the sidewalk totally inaccessible, because there's no room left to walk. You have to walk in the street or go onto a different street to move in that direction. So I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank the council, I want to thank Chief Frisco and his department for really putting in 16 months of work with the state, it's the state road, to somehow find a solution to make traffic more safe, make pedestrian walking and cycling in that area more safe. And I think by encouraging the state to move forward with this road diet, of shrinking the roadway, I should say, probably from four lanes to two, will slow down traffic in that part of town, which is right now, even though the speed limit's 35, cars are going much faster. This will help people cross and make life a lot safer for them. So I want to say thank you for that. I just also want to point out, there's a new store coming into town on the corner of North 11th and 27, where the old GLA 27 used to be, some sort of a restaurant. I remember when GLA 27 was there, you had to go into the driveway, it was one-way in on 27, and you had to go out on Highland. I just hope that's being, that type of traffic control is being instituted for this new restaurant, because again, a lot of people pass by when they walk in that area, and especially at Friday nights, coming home from the synagogue. I just want, God forbid, there shouldn't be any accidents there. Any way we can enforce safety on that corner now, which will probably be heavy traffic, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. We'll see if they've come before the planning board. Thank you, Josh.
Hi, I'm Mike Buckman at 234 Lincoln Avenue in Highland Park. I'm speaking in favor of the resolution, which I guess used to be called Fair and Welcoming Communities, but aimed at making all of our citizens feel safe and welcome. There are a number of misconceptions about immigrant populations, and taking a look at the Southern Poverty Law Center's 10 myths about immigrants, I wanted to share with you some facts about crime and immigration. Number one is that immigrants are much less likely to commit crimes, property crimes or violent crimes, than those who are already born here. For instance, high rates of immigration are associated with lower rates of violent crime and property crime. Native-born American males ages 18 to 39 are twice as likely to be in jail. 3.3% of American native-born males are incarcerated, whereas half that percent of immigrants. So a tiny number of immigrants are crime problems, and these are 2010 figures. Similar information was available in 1980, 1990, and 2000. So it's a longstanding case that immigrants tend to commit fewer property and violent crimes. Statistics also show that counties that maintain policies like the one that's proposed today average 35.5% fewer crimes compared to counties that don't. This holds true for immigrants who are documented and undocumented, regardless of the country of origin, level of education. In other words, the overwhelming majority of immigrants are not quote-unquote criminals. And this also squares with long-term trends. Between 1990 and 2013, the immigrant population in America grew, but crime rates fell. It's very hard to say that the increase in immigrants caused the rise in crime rates, when it's fallen. During that same period, the FBI indicated that violent crime rates and property crimes declined, 48% and 41% respectively. So the notion out there that we are suffering a crime wave in general, and that it's the fault of immigrants, is wrong on both counts. The truth is that foreign-born people in the United States, whether naturalized or permanent residents, or immigrants who are undocumented, are incarcerated less than native-born Americans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Craig Hanok. I live at 227 Montgomery Street here in Highland Park. I've spoken on a couple of occasions already in favor of the resolution. I'd like to thank the council for the hard work that you've put into the resolution so far, especially Mr. Hirsch, and very much encourage you to vote in favor of it tonight. In fact, if I can make one sort of grammatical remark about it, or I don't know, language remark about it, it's that I do think in a few of the paragraphs, it's not clear any longer whether we're talking about immigrants or refugees, or some other sort of larger group of people who may feel themselves estranged in some way or alienated in some way from the community. And I do think that the language in some places could be much sharper, more sharply focused on the specific, unique needs of immigrants, in particular undocumented immigrants, and refugees or people seeking asylum in this country. So if you are opening up the document for further revision, I think you might look at some of the paragraphs where there's a sort of long list of people who may feel on the margins of society, and yet doesn't specifically mention undocumented immigrants and asylum seekers. So in any case, I do want to thank you for your hard work and very much encourage you to vote in favor this evening of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seth Copperdale, Reformed Church of Highland Park. I too want to thank you all for the work on this. I have to just be perfectly honest, though. I find the final draft extremely disappointing. I'm not worried about five or 10 years from now, and I don't need anybody to tell me how I should feel about it five or 10 years from now. I'm worried about five days from now. I'm worried about five weeks from now. I'm worried about what's happening during the Trump administration. And this document, while it may be nice for longevity's sake, is absolutely nothing that feels good to people who are suffering right now and who feel nervous right now, because everything in there is already stuff that's true. We know you guys aren't going to go out of your way to work with ICE. It really doesn't feel like there's anything with teeth. And I can remember conversations about the importance of this, having teeth. There's nothing in there that says if ICE calls up on a Friday night and says, "Hey, we're going to be in town the next day," that anybody's going to know about that, just like last week, Thursday, in New Brunswick, where the New Brunswick police knew that ICE was coming the next day. This was April 20th, and there were seven different incidents that took 10 people to detention and broke up a whole ton of families and scared the crud out of numerous people in that town. It's because of the fact that there wasn't enough teeth in that town to stand up and really do something proactive. You have an opportunity to have much better stuff than what's in this document. I'm still saying vote for the document, but I hope that beyond the document, you can do something that actually looks like real support for immigrants, because this is not support for immigrants who are suffering fear at this moment. It's something helpful, maybe down the road, to put on the shelf, to pull out in certain moments. But if we're going to do something that supports the people who are suffering right now, maybe it's going to have to be an executive order, maybe it's going to have to be something that comes out much stronger, that says, you'll say something that's supportive of folks that offer sanctuary, that says that you'll actually go to bat for people, and I don't feel that in this document.
Anne Gowen, South Second Avenue. Is this working? There it is. You've had to put your mouth right on it, practically.
Very close.
South Second Avenue. I also want to thank the council and the mayor for your work on this. I'm proud to be part of a town that is thinking so hard about this document and has put so much labor into it and spent so much time on it. I do tend to agree, I would, if the choice is vote on it, yes or vote no, I certainly would advocate voting yes. I too would rather see some more specific details. I mean, for example, in addition to what Seth said, I would not mind a provision that said that the police of Highland Park are not to ask residents about immigration status. Now, I understand that the police may already make a practice of not doing that, and I also understand we may not be allowed to tell the police what to do. I don't know what the legal relationship is. But I would like to see that in, you know, in the document. If it's something the police already do, then it doesn't change anything, perhaps with some sort of exception clause, except in the case of, I can't imagine what that emergency would be, but if I come up. I would like to see something, you talk about opposing registries on the basis of everything except for immigration status. I would like you to see it actually address immigration status, because that is the kind of registry we are dealing with now. We are dealing with the publication of these documents on federal websites. I don't remember if it's ICE or DHS, generally what it is, you know, saying how many undocumented immigrants in particular districts have been accused of, charged with, suspected of crimes, including people specifically who were or were not released from local detention without giving a heads-up to ICE. I mean, those are the kind of registries that are really happening right now. We're not looking at registries affecting, you know, gender fluids people, for example. So I would love to see more language in the document specifically addressing what we're talking about. That said, I appreciate that the council's done so much work on it, and I thank you for that. Thank you.
My name is Herb Gross, and I live at Adelaide Gardens in Highland Park. I've listened to every person that got up here this evening, and every person was talking about immigrants, but not one person that got up here to speak spoke about our children, your children, your grandchildren. We must protect our children from these drugs. It's just like President Trump said, build that wall, keep these drug addicts out. He deported some 800,000 criminals just recently. Everyone is well-informed, was on TV, you saw it, you read about it. These 800,000 immigrants had criminal records of every conceivable crime that you could think of. We cannot have these immigrants come into this country and violate our laws that were made by your congressmen, your senators. We must build that wall.
Hi.
You need to speak close to the microphone.
I'm Karen Jackson, and I live 242 South 6th Avenue. I'm going to the Senior Center every day on Kim, on Janity, going out of the way to help everybody. help everybody. And I just want to thank the senior center on behalf of the painting, on the, they really go out of their way almost every day for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilwoman Kim, make sure you pass that on to them.
Thank you. I will pass that on to Kim and Andrea. I will be there at the luncheon.
Okay. Hi.
Hi. My name is Sheila Sekar. I live on nineteen Raridan Avenue. I'm up here to speak about the new fair and welcoming resolution. Hello. I'm up here to talk about the new fair and welcoming resolution, and I want to thank the council and Councilman Hirsch for all the work that you put into it. It was really important for me to see that we wouldn't be putting in the two eighty-seven G and implementing that, so I really appreciate that that was in the resolution, though I do agree with a lot of the people that came up here. I would like to see something with a little more teeth, or at least something that is a lot more fluid in the case of another executive order coming to pass and affecting our residents. If for some reason we end up in a scramble, what do we do then during those instances? But in the instance for today, if you had to vote for anything, I would encourage you all to vote yes.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Lee from down the road in Somerset, if you don't mind me visiting here. And on the immigration resolution, let me speak a little bit about my personal experience. I was born in New Jersey, but I was raised in Hong Kong, and I didn't come back to the U.S. to live until I was like thirteen. And when I went to high school in New Jersey, I had a lot, I know a lot of kids who are undocumented or had, their immigration status was unclear. And I noticed that those kids had lived here longer than I have at that point, but they were in greater danger of deportation than I would ever be. And then as I grew up, I noticed there were adults who have kids that have joined the military. I mean, that's the ultimate sacrifice that you can make for this country, who could be deported any moment, whereas I, who really haven't done that much for America, was in no great danger. And that never seemed fair to me, so that's one of the reasons why I'm so passionate about this. And I've been to various city and town councils speaking on this subject. And just like a lot of people here, I want to thank this mayor and the city council for working so hard and being so progressive on this issue compared to a lot of other places that have been dragging the feet on it. But I also share the concerns that some people have raised. Like David said, the title of this resolution is becoming extremely unfocused. I mean, it doesn't even mention the word immigration in any form, which is what it's ultimately about. And it always helps to have these things in the clear, if nothing else, to make it easier to Google. And I would also go back to what Seth suggested. He says sometimes the local police may hear about an ICE raid. I know that this doesn't often happen, but I, you might have to consult with your attorney, but I don't think it would be against any law or regulation if you hear about a raid to publicize it so that people can get a warning. Because that actually is what happened with some of the resolutions passed, I know, and I think in Los Angeles, by the school board and by some school boards in Illinois. What they do is if ICE comes asking for the school to give information on a student or their family, they would contact that family and hook them up with an immigration legal response service, sort of give them an advance warning and give them a heads-up and give them a, you know, so that they can deal with it. And I would also suggest, actually, this is a question. The resolution, what happens if someone in Highland Park thinks that, I know this may not happen, but what happens if they think that the police did help ICE out in a way that is contrary to this resolution? Who would they complain to? Would they complain to the task force that was outlining this resolution? Because I don't see a mechanism for publicizing a contact number or any information about this task force.
So, let me just address that question before you go too far. The task force was originally charged with working on this document so that we can have something in place. However, at Councilman Hirsch's urging, we will be making the task force a more permanent sort of group, and some of the things they'll continue to address are how do we make it easier for our immigrant population to become active parts of our community, but also to be put on the road for legalization if necessary. So, the kinds of questions like that reporting question is something that you may want to address in that, in the task force, or whatever, if it's going to be a committee or commission by that body.
Because, I mean, a lot of this resolution is kind of technical, but I do think a lot of it is very important and sound in outlining how the police will not cooperate with ICE. But there needs to be a mechanism to make sure that that is happening. Like, will there be regular reports from the police on their interactions with ICE? Will that be part of?
So, let me ask Councilwoman Foster Dublin, who's the liaison for public safety, to address that.
Approximately ten years ago, we had passed a resolution saying that our police department will not act as ICE agent. They will not be doing the bidding of ICE. It's a federal government task, and we are here to protect all residents of Highland Park, and that's their job. And we have been acting in that manner, and I don't see in the near future or anytime soon where our officers are going to be acting as ICE agents. We have never taken on that role, and our local police officers is here to serve and protect our local residents. So, acting in for ICE, as ICE representative, that's not their goal. Also, we have had situations in the past where ICE did come into Highland Park, but they never notified our police department. They are not required to notify us.
Indeed. But I'm just asking, is there a mechanism for, like an ombudsman, to make sure that that is happening?
I think as Councilmember Hirsch has put together the task force, there, it's going to be more consideration than just having the task force Somerset because we've completed this task. As he spoke about putting together some form of nonprofit, I think that will be put in place. So, there's opportunities to add more to what we have done. We started something, but there's more opportunities to take a closer look and take some of your suggestions in mind.
And in the original resolution to not work with ICE, was there a mechanism to make sure that all the police and all the people that are working for them are trained and at least knowledgeable about this? Because sometimes it just takes someone in a lower position who doesn't know about it to give the information to ICE, and then?
But let me share this with you. As I said, it was approximately ten years ago, ten years ago, we were not looking at the issue as that we're looking at today. And I think that we have acted very proactively to support and protect our community. And with that said, we started about ten years, no, actually twelve years ago, we started diversity training within our police department. And so, we have, from every sector you can think of, where we have had our police department trained to deal with diverse communities for religious, sexual preference, even autism. They have started, we have been very proactive in making all of this happen. So, early on tonight, I reported that we received an award from the Attorney General's office. Those are some of the very proactive steps that we have taken in Highland Park to keep our town safe and to keep everyone safe.
Ultimately, this is about community police.
And also, a big part of it is our police department serving and protecting each and every one of us. And if we've been doing this for the past decade, there's no way we're going to turn our backs now and not do the job, that stellar job that they have been doing.
Okay. So, my suggestion would just be to possibly put in a mechanism for people to report any concerns they may have, and maybe like a line about, you know, making sure this information gets out to everybody in the police department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Ellen Witt, and I live at twenty South First Avenue here in Highland Park. And one of the things, I do want to thank you for having extended the time on this resolution. At one point, I thought it might be simply announced and voted on very rapidly, and I think that that's been a benefit to the community to make it available and have a period of time for people to be discussing it and looking it over in many different forms. And in that sense, I think tonight is, I believe, is the first night where all of us have been together since we've been able to see the entire text. I'm not sure. And for that reason, it is worth taking a careful look so that you can actually get feedback on the concrete text. Before, most of us were commenting on the general concepts behind the resolution. And so, in that sense, I guess one of the things that kind of stood out to me was in the point number seven, which refers to that, I guess it's, I can't hardly read it now on my phone, but it just says that officials and so forth within the borough will not use funds or resources to enforce federal immigration laws. And I know that there's plans to have further directives, more specifically, to different parts of maybe personnel here in Highland Park. But I think there's also a category that enforcement can be a little, you can wiggle room. I think it needs to be not only enforced, but any assistance to ICE on any level. You have to go after the assistance as well and as enforcement because you're, a person may interpret, I'm not actually enforcing, I'm not helping them enforce the law here, but they just called me and asked me some question, and I'm answering them. And that might not count in somebody's mind as being enforcement. So, I think that leaves a bit of a loophole there. I also, I just want to say, I mean, of course, as people know, I've spoken before, that I do stand in solidarity with immigrants, whether they're documented or undocumented, because we know right now, we don't have a system that will really fairly and efficiently allow immigrants to regularize their status. And it's, the current system is in complete disarray nationally. So, we do have to take steps to really help to defend the constitutional rights of our neighbors. And I do want to say that it's important for this policy, especially additional directives, to be very clear because the whole advantage of the policy is not only to protect our neighbors, but also to help the personnel of Highland Park to actually know what to do. Because it's one thing to say, we've had past practice, we've only been contacted twice by ICE, we've only, whatever, you know, we have that past practice. Yes, we could have used this policy years ago, but right now, we really do need the policy, really with very clear directives to personnel on what to do. It helps them. It helps put them in a stronger position, if they get contacted formally or informally, to know what to do and to be able to say, hey, you know, it's not my policy, this is the town's policy. It's not me trying to figure out what our past practice has been. It's been laid out pretty clearly. I'm sorry, ICE, I can't do A, B, and C. Because right now, ICE is actually looking for lots of ways to get around all kinds of policies and put pressure. We know that on a county level that this is happening, and there's, we don't know where it's going to pop up in any single town, where they're going to be snooping around, asking questions, trying to get assistance in one form or another from local personnel. So, we want to put our personnel in the strongest position to really respond to that. Just the last comment I really want to just make tonight, I think, I just want it on record as a correction. There's, no one has deported eight hundred thousand people anywhere. This would be, and much less within a hundred days. It's physically impossible at this point in the United States. So, I just don't want anybody to watch this on TV or something, think that that has actually occurred. That's factually incorrect. So, I think it's worth really, if necessary for tonight, if you all feel you need a little more time to clean up some of the wording, I wouldn't have a problem with you extending the time. If you want to bring back some clearer directives later, that would be also good. But I do think we're going to have to sharpen some of it up. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Hunston, and I'm at three oh four Montgomery Street. And I really want to thank you and all of you, and especially the Immigrant and Refugee Task Force and Councilman Hirsch, oh, sorry, Councilman Hirsch, for the process. I appreciated the opportunity to be at the forum and have been at several meetings since the forum. I am standing in support of the resolution, but I also want to address some of the concerns that have related to the wording and even the name of the resolution. I actually feel that this resolution has the potential to impact more than immigrants and refugees. I think it has the opportunity to protect historically marginalized communities or communities, however we want to say that, communities who have been victims of police violence or victims of other forms of violence. And I think it's really important, while I absolutely am in support of all of the things that have been said in regards to supporting immigrants and refugees, I think it's important to know that this is not, these kind of policies are not just in support of immigrants and refugees. They have the potential to support other communities, African-American communities, communities of color that have been victims of police violence. And I see this as a first step, as I think several people have said, of many other steps that we might take through a, what, Immigration and, I think I read, Immigration and Refugee Affairs Advisory Board. And so, I appreciated hearing from you, Councilman Foster Dublin, that there have been much effort in community policing, and I look forward to seeing more of that because I think that is also very important within our communities and other communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer LaRusso, twenty-two Pembroke Ave., North Brunswick. I work as a social worker that covers Middlesex County, so I have had families in the area. On that note, when I see a bill like this, I do think of how it affects children and families, and I want to thank all of you so much for all of your hard work because the children are ours, whether they are here legally or not, and we're, you know, we're giving our time and our attention to them, our education to them, our social services. We're investing in them, and a lot of them are actually even our citizens, and then if their families are torn apart, that actually creates more of a burden for the social services end. So, I really appreciate what you're doing. I also are on the same note as the last speaker, Jessica, where I feel very, that's very important that this is an inclusive bill as well. I feel like other communities have had a lot of situations where there was reason to have distrust for the police, not specifically in Highland Park necessarily, but just in our history and in our country, and that this is such a positive step because community policing, which you're awarded for, which I also want to commend you for, I mean, that's how you keep communities more safe, and honestly, it's also how you keep police officers more safe, and that's how you do law enforcement in a way that's actually more effective. So, I just want to commend you on that. As far as sharpening things up, anything you could realistically do is appreciated, but I think the bigger piece is how much work you've done and the legacy that you're setting, even in the awards that you've won. I mean, you really seem to be very much on the side of community policing, and I really appreciate that. The one clause that actually says all the different types of people that could be protected by this bill, I don't recall if it had the mentally ill, but it might have, and if it does, does it? Was that? That's excellent. Thank you so much for that as a social worker. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Herb Gross. I wish to correct?
Mr. Gross, please state your address again. Your address.
Adelaide Gardens, Highland Park. I wish to correct the young lady that was up here a moment ago that said that I was incorrect when I said that there were some eight hundred thousand illegal immigrants with criminal records that were deported. And if that woman wants to go down to the Immigration Bureau with me tomorrow morning, I'll take you down there and let them tell you that these people with criminal records have been deported. So, please don't say that I don't know what I'm talking about, madam.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Tina Weishouse, one forty-three North Fifth Avenue. Oh, so I want to concur with the majority of people here thanking you for all the hard work. And I think that if we see this as a collaborative process, which it has been with the public meetings and allowing for so much public input, I would encourage you maybe to put the vote off for a session. the vote off for a session. I support it, I want you to vote yes for it, but I think that there have been a number of good additions, and you can, you know, to sharpen some of the wording, even, I mean, I just was looking at it, and what happened to the "fair and welcoming" phrase? That seems to have, I thought that was going to be the title, instead of sanctuary, and I know that certain organizations support that over others. So is there, can you explain, why did you change that?
We didn't think, I mean, you know, I think our task force didn't think it accurately reflected the intent of the policies. I think that was, I mean, when, the whole, the whole approach was, was to take a policy, a policy of inclusion-
Yeah.
-in whatever we do, but in this specific, you know, in this specific instance, specifically related to our immigrant communities, and in the interaction with our local police and with our local, and with our municipal agencies. So that was the, that was the, you know, when we thought inclusive communities was more accurate.
Is that a phrase that's being used anywhere? I mean, there is a benefit-
Yeah.
-to making a policy that stands with other towns, whether it be, you know, sanctuary or fair and welcoming. I think that, that, there's a benefit to that.
I understand, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think, I think it's, we spent a lot of time on, you know, yeah, I agree with you. I think we spent a lot of time on the title, but at a certain point, we realized that it was taking a lot of energy away from the substance, and that's really what we decided was, was more important. The title seemed to be attracting far more attention than what we, what we really set out to do, was to create a comprehensive and foundational policy document, rather than just label us as something, which I, you know, and I said this at the forum, I mean, I personally, I like the term sanctuary. We, but there's, but you know, we're not all, we're not all in agreement here, and we all respect each other's opinion. Specifically, though, the, but we had concerns about the, about the term sanctuary because, because of, because of the immigrant rights organizations that we worked with, who don't, who did not favor the-
Right, and I thought that, that position was of a fair and welcome-
Was to move, was to move over to fair and welcome. Well, we kind of wanted to, we wanted to make it our own.
So I think, I think, you know, I heard your suggestion about not vote-
Just taking, there have been a number to sharpen certain passages-
Right, but, but when we vote on a resolution, that doesn't mean we have to ignore it afterwards. I think it's important for us to move on, on a statement that addresses what we, for the most part, what we feel is very important for our community. Once a document is voted on, doesn't mean it can't be amended or, or reworked, and that's something the task force can certainly look into-
Okay.
-but I, but I think it's important to get it, get it on the record.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I just thought we might want to kind of take this, these, because there are a number of people have said, you know-
Right.
-pointedly.
Right.
So what's the process? If you, you know, you have a record of the things that people said tonight, where they would like to see more teeth, or this passage sharpened, can you do that after you vote, and then, what, does it come back to the council?
We would vote on it the way it is now.
Yeah.
The task force would then meet again and talk about the input and make a, you know, recommendation to the council on whether or not they want to make certain amendments to the resolution.
Amendments.
Am I correct, Borough Attorney?
Correct.
And then the amendments come to be voted on-
Correct.
-and then they're incorporated.
Correct. And the, the document does not, it's a living document, so to speak.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Anna Haleylock, I'm at 135 North Fifth, as of this past July, a new resident of Highland Park. I am definitely strongly in favor of the idea of this resolution, and to a great extent the resolution itself, as it currently is. I do have concerns, and I would share them with many that have been raised here tonight, having to do with things related to teeth and mission, and what the point of this is. It definitely, at this point, feels very collaborative, and I'm delighted to be in a community that would engage in such an exhaustive process to try to reach consensus, and I say that very meaningfully, and I believe in that, and I'm, I picked the right place to live, as a result. I do have, it's collaborativeness shows at this point, you know, drifting to some extent from what at least people thought the original focus of this was, and the thought, the original thought by some of us might have been incorrect, when it was still called sanctuary, and even without that title, what was underpinning, like what was, what sanctuary implies. I think it's a fair distance away from that original intent. To be a little blunt, verging on edgy, it feels like an All Lives Matter document, rather than a Black Lives Matter document, at this point, in the sense that it is, the original focus was to be on protecting immigrants and refugees, and to make a strong statement about some very specific, multi-level, multi-institutional vulnerabilities that those communities face in our town, that don't, while there are certainly overlaps with other historically and currently marginalized groups, they're pretty darn distinct. And I think, while I would support a separate document that is anti-oppression and inclusive around marginalized communities, that's a different, conceptually, the origins of that oppression are different. You can't really accomplish both in a meaty way in this document. And so specifically, I mean, I think there's some things in here, item three, four, five, six, seven, eight, those are concrete and even contain still immigrants and refugee-specific language. Some of them have been watered down to be more inclusive. When I say watered down, I'm all about, like, communities coming out anti-racism, anti-misogyny, you know, I've got a kid who's trans, you know, transgender. So I, I support that, but, but I think, in this case, again, I'm concerned about mission drift. I'm also concerned, yeah, in item seven, the extra "and," and the funds and resources not being expended, that's a pretty loose reference in here, that I think, either if the document's going to be specific, then that's not specific. If it's not going to be specific, I'm not sure what it's for. The clause or the item that really actually struck me negatively was nine. It makes a point of saying, "Whoa, whoa, 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 but wait a minute, we're not going crazy here." It's the now, you know, therefore, be it further resolved, the mayor and council shall not adopt any resolution, da-da-da, that is found to be in conflict with any obligation imposed, da-da-da. So that tells me, we have a break, you know, whoa, we're not going crazy, like, we're going to behave ourselves. It seems strikingly conservativizing of the document, and it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem necessary to me. What also doesn't seem necessary are the, the items I didn't list, which to me are also given, in a positive way. I would assume, for both legal reasons and moral ones, that we will conduct ourselves governmentally and interpersonally in this community in a way that is inclusive, and I'm not sure why, you know, so the items one, two, not, 10 and 11. I mean, at a time like this, it's important to remind ourselves of those commitments, but I'm, I'm just thoughtful, why do, why do we need to remind ourselves? We should know that about ourselves, that they should be elsewhere, they should embody. So it's, it makes me nervous that the, it helps to water down the document further, that we're, again, it's the all lives mattering of this kind of expanded mission, and getting away from, or aliding what the real, the real driving point of this document was. So again, it is a true pisser to have someone come in who has not gone to the forums, not been involved until now, making these comments, that's just intensely irritating. I'm so appreciative of the work, and again, I mean it when I say I'm delighted to be in this community and to foster this kind of conversation. I think it's not a bad idea, because we've only had this for, what, a few weeks now, to possibly delay the vote, but go forth, if you vote, vote for it, and thank you.
Anna Perret, 344 Becker Street, and I'm here to convey my support of this resolution, because it's inclusive, I do find it very thoughtful, compassionate, and carefully crafted. I'm aware it's meant to avoid conflicts, and I think it should avoid legal conflicts with other authorities and directives from, so, could it be sharper? Yes, I would be in favor of voting on this resolution with a strong commitment to address most of the points that have been raised tonight, and to make those amendments, if you think it's realistic to, you know, to, if making so many amendments is not excessively cumbersome. I do understand the need for closure, I need closure, I feel today we're having the discussion that we should have had from the beginning, it's nobody's fault, I mean, it's probably a good thing that, you know, there was a long process. It also opened the door to all this anti-immigrant, digressive statements that we had to hear for month and month, and, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to hear the anger and the fear of the people, but it also hurt me, as an immigrant, to hear immigrants, you know, bashing immigrants, it's where we're at in this country, and I think a document like this, with all its flaws, might be helpful in containing some of this hemorrhage, and I would urge people to vote on it, to get some closure, to amend it, to keep it a living document, and especially to, you know, craft very strong ordinances and executive orders that will give a shape to the implementation of this policy, because this is only a policy, I mean, it can't be a political statement, it can't be many other things. So I, it's a point of departure, and I'm looking forward to the work that you will produce in cooperation with the community. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Hi, Dan Stern, Cardinal, 221 Harper Street. First, I want to say thank you for your work, and that you should vote to support this resolution, but I also want to take kind of a, kind of a broader view of the kind of issue and situation as a whole. The reason this is such a pressing issue right now is because we have President Trump, and one of the reasons for that is letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. This resolution is a positive thing, is it perfect? No, as other people have said, we'd like to see a little bit more, a little bit more bite behind it, maybe some sharper language, but it's a positive policy, it's a step in the right direction. We should be happy with it, we should be proud that we're going to pass it and institute it, but we should not be satisfied with it, we should keep working to sharpen it as we go forward. But just like 80,000 voters across three Midwestern states, let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and here we are, we should not make the same mistake here, we should make positive progress, and then continue to do so after we take this first step. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this will be the last speaker for this session.
Sorry, Mayor, just one thing, there will be another public comment session.
Yes, yes, for this public comment session.
My name is James DeBoer, I live at 60 F. Woodbridge Avenue. I was, I had the honor of presenting at the forum that was held about a month ago in the school, so I thank you again for that opportunity. I work over in New Brunswick for the Catholic Charities of the Diocese of Metuchen, and in that capacity, I work very closely with New Brunswick's immigrant community. As was alluded to earlier this evening, we had a significant series of what we call targeted enforcement actions by Immigration and Customs Enforcement about two weeks ago on Thursday, April 20th. They came early in the morning, apparently looking for one particular individual located on Sanford Street. It's not clear whether they actually found that person, but they ended up taking into custody at least eight other people, who were not the people that they were looking for, but whom they deemed to not have proper immigration status, and who were therefore taken into custody. I did have the opportunity to speak with a couple of the family members of these individuals, who told me as follows. One of them had been in the country for 12 years, his son has autism, and the family doesn't have any other means of support, now that the father is in detention. He's awaiting, they're hoping to raise money for bond, which has been set at $5,000. He has no criminal history or no even immigration violations, other than his initial unauthorized entry into the country. This afternoon, I spoke with another family member of somebody who was detained on Thursday the 20th by Immigration and Customs Enforcement, who reported that it was a 35-year-old man who's been in this country for 14 years, who supports not only his spouse and his children, but also his mother, who's older and is ailing, and she told me they don't know how they're going to be able to cover the rent, and they don't know how they're going to be able to cover the medicine. So we are seeing communities and families torn apart by what's going on. We do have the latest statistics from the detentions that have taken place in the last few months, between January and mid-March, Immigrations and Customs Enforcement arrested 21,362 immigrants, and of those, 5,441, approximately one quarter, had no criminal records. So a substantial number of people are getting caught up in this, even though they're doing everything right, according to all of the rules and all of the laws, as I'm sure many of you are well aware. So it's, it's important to pass this policy, it's important to pass this resolution, it's important to stand with the immigrant community, to say that the Borough of Highland Park does not consider people to be criminals, that the Borough of Highland Park is going to support people, walk with people, accompany people, welcome people, and include people. I am encouraged to see some of this, many of the specifics in, in the current text of the, of the proposal, including the privacy protections that are, that are mentioned, the particular policy for U-Visa program when people are the victims of crimes and are applying for status on the basis of their participation in the investigation, and then also the, the continuance of the task force, as well as another positive and very particular step that's included in this, as well as the, as the continuation of the police force's policy of not, not participating above the minimum requirements of a judicial warrant. So I do appreciate that, and I believe that's already in there as it is written. One final note is, what happens if places use the term sanctuary? It can be very confusing, because places might use the term, but not actually be precluding ICE actions in their jurisdiction. So a place might say, "Well, we're a sanctuary jurisdiction." Doesn't prevent, to my knowledge, it doesn't prevent that ICE should come in and conduct a targeted enforcement action, again, as I imagine that you're all aware at this point. And in fact, it can cause confusion, and then we have the strange case of Austin, Texas, where ICE apparently conducted additional targeted enforcement actions, even raids, specifically because the city had declared it was sanctuary, and that was reported by a US magistrate judge in open court by the Texas newspaper here back in March. So I don't say necessarily that, that calling a place sanctuary makes it a sanctuary, and in fact, it might even potentially go in the other direction. So I appreciate the care with which you've been approaching the language of the resolution, and I do thank you again for your time and for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, we are, you're going, oh, I did say he was the last speaker for this session.
If I can ask for your indulgence, I'm Rosalynn Sherman, I'm a councilwoman in Franklin Township. I'll take two seconds, I'm here to support you, to commend you, to thank everybody here for the intelligent types of comments that were made. I will take this back and use it in my own township as we struggle and move forward with this. Thank you very much for allowing me.
Thank you. 517-141, resolution to introduce 2017 Main Street Highland Park budget and approve on final, on final reading, and schedule public hearing date. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second-
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, would you report on advertising the Capitol Ordinance Safe Routes to School Grant for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Capitol Ordinance providing for the state Safe Routes to School Grant in the Borough of Highland Park County of Middlesex appropriating $216,000 has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, and affidavits of publication are in file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing, seeing none. Resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Just one more time. We're so proud of this amazing grant. Thanks to our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee for following through on this. We were awarded $216,000 by the New Jersey Department of Transportation to improve our, yeah, to improve curb ramps and for pedestrians and peoples with disabilities and bicyclists. And this is our, the motion for us to go out to bid now and to start the work very soon. So, yes, thank you.[708.12][708.12](APPLAUSE)
Clerk, can you report on introduction of the Handicap Parking Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Ordinance amending on street parking regulations for residences occupied by handicapped persons and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced in writing by the Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you report on introduction of Salary Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the Borough of Highland Park and the method of payment of such compensation has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you please report on introduction of Vacant Properties Ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance amending the Code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 303, by adding Article 3, requiring care and maintenance of foreclosed properties, Article 4 regulating vacant storefronts, and Article 5 authorizing the demolition of hazardous structures, has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
This is an important ordinance. This is our first reading on this. We've noticed an uptick in abandoned properties, some of them right around the corner from where you live. It brings down our property values. It's unsafe health-wise and also for public, for other public safety reasons. And with this ordinance, we can begin to list these, these properties on a registry that requires them to pay an annual fee, a certain amount the first year, more the second year, et cetera. It's to compel banks that own these properties to do the repairs or to sell it to, to a developer that would be more interested in, in doing the repairs. So, this is an important piece for us, for our, for our safety and for our property value. So, yes.
I have the great honor this evening to appoint Borough Administrator Josephine Terry Hovere. May I have a motion to confirm the appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Welcome, yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Thank you.[931.87][931.87](APPLAUSE) I, I just want you all to know that Terry came to work today actually at 8:00 in the morning. And the minute she walked in, we grabbed her and pulled her into an office and said, "Okay, now your day starts. Here we go." She's been on the go all day long today since she walked in the building. So, thank you.
Sure. It's a good orientation.[962.12][962.12](LAUGHTER)
Okay. Consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the following items, number 16 through number 45.
So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt all of the resolutions except for 517-161, the resolution to establish Immigration and Refugee Task Force at this meeting. And just to say, I do support the resolution, but I have heard a number of residents get up here tonight and basically say to us, and I do agree with them, that this is the first meeting since they've had an opportunity to review the resolution, to actually make some public comment. And I don't think it would hurt the council to continue to take a look at the resolution as is and bring it up for a vote at our May 16th meeting.
Councilman Fine, I'm sorry.
I would move to second. Councilman Fine, resolution to support him, to give more people... We've heard a number of persons with various concerns tonight and that they want us to take a closer look. And although I'm in full support and I would like to see us move forward, I would also like to, for us to get an opportunity to go back and take a look at what was said and see if there's, see what was said can be implemented into this and then come back at our next meeting.
I'm going to ask Councilman Hirsch to speak, and then I have something to say as well.
I think, I think Councilman Fine identified the incorrect resolution. I think he intends to mean 517-160, resolution of holding respect and protection for historically discriminated populations.
Thank you, Councilman Hirsch.
So, we have a, we have a motion that's been seconded, but we do not want to... I, I'm assuming that you are in favor of establishing the task force.
Yes, I am.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Call the vote.
If not, I'll be happy to contribute. I don't know if you, Councilman Hirsch, Councilman Fine, heard me explain before that this is a living document. The task force has been working on very hard, and so has the entire council. I see no reason why we can't vote on it tonight and continue to work on it, just so that the, the aim of the mission, which is to protect our residents, gets put on the record. And I would ask that you withdraw your motion and vote on this tonight and have, have Councilman Hirsch and his task force continue to address the issues that came up and were noted.
So, respectfully, Madam Mayor, I hope it's okay. I would like to keep, not withdraw my motion at this time. Specifically, and I, and I do understand that this, everything that we pass when it comes to resolutions, that they are living documents. On the other hand, in my two and a half years on council and my basic, I don't know, in my life experience, once something is, is passed, and it's, want to say, it's, it's, it's not always easy to go back and, and make those amendments, and it takes, it takes time. It takes a couple of council meetings to get things on the agenda. And all, all I'm asking for with this motion, and again, I do support, and I should say it's Resolution 517-160, the resolution to uphold, uphold respect and protection for historically discriminated populations and promoting community inclusivity for Highland Park residents, I do support it. I, I just feel like we should give it at least one more meeting, and that's why I'm, I'm making the motion.
I would ask, I would ask Councilman Hirsch to tell me how you feel about this, given that it's your project.
Mayor, I move the vote on the motion.
I, I ask for Councilman Hirsch to respond.
I think we need to be decisive and take action tonight. You know, I think we've heard a lot of, of, I think, I think this, I think this concept, you know, we, we started, I need to make very clear that it, while, I, I, I understand and I completely understand why it's important to stick it to the administration. You know, I know we want to do that. We don't feel that that is necessarily the role of the municipal government. We feel that it is the role of the municipal government to establish policies that prevent any kind of intrusion on, 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 on the rights of any resident. So, when we say all lives matter, I mean, I know you say, I, I know that was said, you know, in, in a negative sense, but that's not the essence of, of, of this resolution. It is very specifically related to our immigrant and refugee community and, and looking at the needs of our, our emerging immigrant populations. You know, New Jersey has, is, is among the top six states in the country with, with the highest undocumented immigration populations. This is a reality for our communities. This is a reality that, that this is something that we have to face immediately, but it can't be done, we, in our opinion, and in the task force's opinion, it can't be done by making, you know, a, 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 a powerful admonition of, of, of the Trump administration. There are other ways to do that. I've been doing it. I know a lot of you have been doing that, too. You know, our role is to establish institutional policy that prevents these things from happening, no matter who's in charge. And that's why I think it's important to really act today. Councilman Fine, with all due respect, we've had this conversation since, if you want to look at the municipal ID program, we've been having this conversation for almost two years, developing policy that brings in marginalized residents and specifically immigrant residents, undocumented or, undocumented or otherwise. So, I think that the council has clarity. I think the public understands the intent of, of, of these policies. This is a resolution, so it, it, it's a statement of policy intent. The point of the, of the, of the, of the municipal committee that will be designed to actually carry out these policies moving forward, we'll, we'll, we'll consider everything that was stated today, and I think there were some really good things that, that were pointed out today. But if anybody thinks that this is the end-all of our actions against, against these federal actions, well, not only are you setting yourselves up for disappointment, but you're looking at a very short-sighted policy standpoint. And I really have to take exception to, to, to the fact, to, to delaying this, this mo, this, this motion any further. I think that causes more confusion, and if we are concerned about, about our residents who are vulnerable to, to this administration, I think we have to take action now. Thank you.[1412.01][1412.01](APPLAUSE)
Okay. And Councilman George, to your point, I'm going to call the vote.
Thank you.
Where were we?
We had a motion and a second to...
Remove.
Okay. Do I need to have another motion, or can we stand with the motion that exists?
We have to vote.
Okay. Okay. Can you give me a roll call, then?
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
I vote to table it until we have our next meeting, which is in two weeks, and we can include some of the comments that was made tonight. As an immigrant myself, I know how important this document is for all of us. I came here, as you all can tell, I have a huge accent, and I'm an immigrant, and I know I want to see everything that's done that is going to protect the rights of immigrant and the marginalized community. I'm now an only immigrant. I'm an immigrant. I'm a woman, and I'm black. So, I deal with, I think I covered it all, all of it right there. So, I think for us to, to wait until we have our next meeting to properly address some of the concerns, which were good ones, that was brought up tonight, I think we can wait two more weeks to have it done.[1489.42][1489.42](APPLAUSE)
Councilman George?
There's a time to act, and there's a time to talk. In my profession, which is representing somewhere over 100 towns and boards, there comes a time when both the citizens and the council deserve action. As Councilman Hirsch said, it's been discussed a number of times, and I also thank him for getting this published for one of the first times in advance of the meeting. As you know, usually, it's not available till the agenda comes out. You have to come down to Borough Hall to see it, so I thank him for that. It's time to act. It may not be perfect, but it runs the risk of backsliding to nowhere, and we're backsliding at the federal level, and those who do not learn from history, repeat it. I vote no.[1552.21][1552.21](APPLAUSE)
Well, the motion was to approve the consent agenda and table.
So, so you vote no to table it?
I vote no to table.
Yeah.
So, that was two.
Okay.
Councilman Hirsch?
Just wanted to echo what Councilman George said. I, I vote, I vote no.[1582.01][1582.01](LAUGHTER)
Councilwoman Kim?
Um, you know, I, I think Councilwoman Foster-Dublin, you, as my, some of you might know, my fiance is Sikh, and his in-laws, we, they wear turbans, and this is something that is, as an immigrant myself, my dad is Korean, my mom is African-American, and my fiance is Sikh, and his parents wear a turban. We are here in Highland Park because this is a diverse, multicultural community, and as of right now, I would say we need to go back to the drawing board after hearing your comments. So, I vote yes to continue to table the resolution.[1641.23][1641.23](APPLAUSE)
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Well, as long as we're all airing our personal stories.[1650.73][1650.73](LAUGHTER) My parents were prosecuted first for their religion, and then 12 years later, for their political beliefs. They were refugees and, and graciously taken care of by their allies and, and by the United States of America. I, I am for the content of this resolution. I understand that there are areas that we can improve. I have yet to see this body drop the ball. I know this task force, I, I got emails from a member of the task force this morning investigating another aspect of, of this, of, of this topic. I believe that with the task force, which we know is going to continue, and with the nonprofit that's going to continue to support the immigrant community, I would really, I mean, I thank everybody. I thank the community for coming out and being so engaged. The dialogue is, and the comments have been tremendous, and this is the beauty of Highland Park. I, I have to say, I don't think we should table this tonight. I think we should move ahead with it, and we, we fully expect the task force to come back and the council to report on this on a regular basis. And I think we can do that, and we can do that and make a lot of progress. So, I say, don't table it. Let's move ahead with this.[1741.11][1741.11](APPLAUSE)
Okay. Well, I, 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 I...
Not my history.
So, so I have a couple of things to say before I cast my deciding vote. First of all, I want to say, hey, guys, first time I've ever gotten a chance to vote.[1761.11][1761.11](LAUGHTER)
Yes, she does. Three, three.[1764.11][1764.11](LAUGHTER)
Okay. So, thank you.[1767.11][1767.11](APPLAUSE) The, the, the second thing I want to say is, this is democracy, folks.[1777.63][1777.63](LAUGHTER) As ugly and messy as it can be. I do know how, how hard the task force has worked on this. I have, have spent many hours with Councilman Hirsch going through some of the task force's recommendations. And I also know, as Council President Welkowitz has said, this is not the kind of body that is going to drop something. Unfortunately, we tend to stick with things much longer than most other municipalities would ever think of doing. I know my council people very well. I know our community well. I know that we are not going to let this become what you're afraid of it becoming. And so I very proudly, for the first time, cast my vote to not table this. And so, may I have a motion to adopt or reject all of the, oh, no, it's a motion to adopt all of the consent agenda items, number sixteen through number forty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
And number thirty that is taken out with our votes, right, that was tabled, taken out separately?
No.
No.
But it says, "O.A." It says to adopt O.A.
You're adopting all? That was the motion, to adopt all, the entire consent agenda?
No, but under consent agenda is 160 that we, I just gave my opinion on.
Right, but she did the deciding vote. It was not tabled.
But I want to make it clear that I did not vote for that.
Well, you can vote no on the consent, then.
No, on the consent.
Okay. Councilman George?
Secretary Ben Carson reminded me that I'm celebrating my twentieth year married to an involuntary immigrant whose ancestors spent time in the bottom of a boat dying at a 50% rate so that our children could have a better atmosphere. I think that this is important, but I also remind people, what council knows, that the general public may not, is that the government is required to turn square corners. It's an old, old saying that the Supreme Court, when it was decent, used to say. And it means that governments, elected officials, and acting laws must act in consistency with the law. As Councilman Hirsch will tell you, we've had, he and I have had a number of spirited debates on a lot of issues with this, but we stand in unison with both the spirit and what has been engineered within the parameters of a law to say, no, we won't take it. I vote yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes to all abstain on number forty-two, Resolution to Approve Casino Night Raffle License for Highland Park Educational Foundation. While I approve that, I'm a trustee on the Educational Foundation. The only thing that I'll say at this point is that, you know, we have to take the shape of our ideals, and we don't do that in a one-shot deal. It doesn't happen in one council meeting. It happens over the long term. You have to set the building blocks to establish inclusive policies that address our immigrant community, that address the needs of our immigrant communities, and this is just that. It takes a long-term approach to ensuring that all residents, and particularly our immigrant communities, have access to safe, decent communities, free of the obstacles that have historically kept significant portions of our community from living the American ideal. We have to take the shape of our ideals, and that starts tonight. Yes to all abstain on number forty-two.
Councilwoman Kim?
I would just like to say, I would love to see you guys continue to come out to the meetings as you can see how important your public discussion and comments are to your government body. And we will definitely continue to work on this resolution. Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Thank you, Councilman Hirsch, for your fortitude. Thanks to the task force, Latissa Cataldi, Tracy Cagiano, Isabel Rano, and John Adler, and I believe there's another person that was on?
Jordan Steiner. She had to leave.
I look forward to continued reports from you, either directly or through Councilman Hirsch. Maybe they can come to council and report for us in a month or so and give us an update. That would be fantastic. And I vote yes.
Okay. I am appointing the following: Sarah Kelly, alternate to, to the Board of Health; Jordan Steiner, Immigration and Refugee Task Force; Nancy Wolf, Emergency Management Council; Phyllis Goldstein, Shared Services Commission; Rebecca Hirsch and James Nichols, Rehabilitation and Redevelopment Screening Committee. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
We're now ready for our second public discussion session. Given the time of the evening, I would ask that people keep their comments to be brief. Anybody have anything they have to talk about? Please state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Brian Lee from Somerset, down the road. I would like to thank the council for passing this resolution that I know a lot of you worked very hard on. As you heard earlier, I, there are things that I wish it would be different about it, but I do think that it is very important to establish something first. And the other thing I would say is, I have seen Councilman Matthew Hirsch at a whole bunch of different events, so I know most of them related to immigration, so I know how hard he works, all the people that he's in contact with, all the feedback he gets. So I do trust him and the task force to continue working on it as necessary. So that's one of the reasons why I'm saying that I am not worried at all, like the mayor says, that this council will continue to perfect the resolution. And I also have a question. Do you know what the resolution to, for Highland Park Lot to Work with ICE is? I tried Googling it, but I couldn't find it. It's actually kind of hard to find all the resolutions that Highland Park has passed.
I guess we have to go to the clerk, and just then get a request, put a request in.
Okay. Okay, and once again, thank you guys for doing so much work, even with the disagreements, to protect people. And I would just like to say for the record that ultimately, our local government is actually extremely limited in what they can do to prevent the federal government and the administration from how they enforce immigration laws. I mean, ultimately, that's their bailiwick. And so, you know, what later you can do is extremely important, but people should not put too much of it on you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, I'm Abby Stern Cardinal, and I live at 221 Harper Street. I just wanted to say I really appreciated seeing, you know, democracy in action. And to address, I think, Councilwoman Kim, we will continue to come, and I'm sorry that everyone else left. I find that very unfortunate because this isn't the only important issue for our community, and at least my husband and I are going to continue to come. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Song Chen. I live on Parker Avenue. I'm so disappointed of this result, but I respect it. What I want to say is, how come so many people, they are not the residents of our town, they speak here? If there is a consequence of this resolution, they will pay for that, or we will pay for that? And the other thing is, can we review, if the result is good, right, we all will be happy? But if we see a negative result six months later or one year later, can we review it and amend it? Or can we set a time? I know mayor mentioned that we can review it if there is a negative result, or we even can revoke it, whatever. I understand that. My point is, can we set a timetable with something, we say every six months, we review the resolution? Will we do something to see how the result is?
Well, I will ask Councilman Hirsch to talk with his task force about, you know, how, when the review process might be, if there is one. Okay?
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Liz Estes. I'm from 311 North Fourth Avenue in Highland Park. And I heard information tonight I'd never heard before. So I was present when James DeBoer was talking about being present on Thursday morning in Highland Park. We were at the Reform Church of Highland Park. It was a dire meeting deportation and immigration response team. And James was there, and Seth was there, and there were parents of young people who just lost their spouses in that raid in New Brunswick. And what I heard tonight from Seth was that the New Brunswick Police Department, apparently, he had information that they heard about this raid in advance. So I'm asking and begging, can we do some kind of investigation into what happened in New Brunswick? Just so that we can find out what we need to do to prepare here?
So, let me tell you that when we heard, and when we just heard, we didn't know who was involved or anything about what was happening that Thursday, I did reach out to Freeholder Shanti Nara, and she is looking into, you know, what happened over there. And the last I heard from her is she believes there was a judicial warrant, but she's verifying things. And when we have more information, I'll be happy to speak with you about it.
Okay, that's great. I just ask that the task force also look at that and keep that in mind in what we need to prepare for. Everything keeps changing all the time. I mean, our New Jersey licenses now put immigration status on them. It's really a scary time. We're also asking in our schools for parents to re-register every other year. So there's all new kinds of registration happening.
Excuse me, but that doesn't, that does not ask for citizenship or immigration status?
That's great to know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, may I have a motion to return, go into executive session acquisitions topic?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.